Good afternoon and welcome to the standing committee meeting on Monday, December 23rd, 2024. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick. Mrs. Warwick.
Oh, here, sorry.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is going to be public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be for city council and preventing will not be permitted. After you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. And we do not have any registered speakers this afternoon. Therefore, if there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward. I do not have you, I do not have you listed, sir, but you're more than welcome to come to the podium, say your name, provide your neighborhood for the record.
Hello, my name is Joseph J. What else did you say I needed to do?
Provide your neighborhood for the record. Then your time will begin.
Oh, Pittsburgh is my neighborhood. I run a nonprofit succeeding in life after prison. It's for homeless people and ex-offender. Today, I am here to call the mayor's office out. I am tired of the illegalities coming out of the mayor's office. I'm formally calling on the Department of Justice to can open up an investigation into the mayor's office for his illegal conduct, most of which happened to me. And if you had enough kahunas to do it to me, I can imagine what you did to people that won't fight back, right? The second thing I'm gonna call out is for anybody, anybody that the mayor or Jake Wheatley has had coitus with, or had made promises to get stuff done for sexual favors, you were sexually assaulted by the people in the mayor's office. And you can go to any lawyer or anybody and ask them. Whatever they offered you, you get more millions by suing them for what they did to you, right? Now, my homeless campsite behind the casino was arson seven times. The mayor's office covered it up. I was robbed by certain individuals from which City Hall put on me. Those people, I was robbed and assaulted. Nothing happened to them individuals because they being covered up by the mayor's office. So when I say I'm calling on an investigation to be opened up by the Department of Corrections, I'm not playing. Y'all all know who I am. I'm telling y'all now that this been going on and happening to me because they thought I was gonna hold on to some street code. But I've been done with the streets. So therefore, I don't care about your street code, alright? You're doing stuff illegally to people, to homeless people at that. And when I said about sexual assault, I am speaking the truth because I walked out here in front and seen the mayor having a news conference with some young sisters, right? Who started a nonprofit for homeless children. Now, if that ain't a scam, I don't know what is, but this is the scam that's been running out of the mayor's office, okay? Though children can be homeless, not here in Pittsburgh, not with CYS, not with all these other things, but he get these women and he manipulate his office to get what he want and give them what they want. How you gonna start something when you got somebody been here for two years and you did nothing but hurt that man? And I'm talking about me. So I'm coming here to put you on blast right here on national television, and I'm willing to tell anybody and everybody. And I did 27 years in prison and I never had no problems out of no black administrative officials because they knew what I would do. I'm gonna call you out, and that's what I'm doing to you. And Mr. Wheatley.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 1715 Mercer Street. That's up in the Hill District. Now, the fellow that just left here, he seems to be very disturbed and angry, and I agree with him. When I saw that the homeless people were marching in front of the mayor's house, I knew nothing about it because I would have been there. I heard where the march, the minister, I mean, the, I'm getting a little bit too, talking too fast, because I got three minutes, okay? But the mayor, when they beat the homeless people down, he did not say anything about it. But I was trying to tell agent, the young homeless woman that comes here, that she says she's an agent, I was telling her, I said, they're talking about putting a million dollars down in the city downtown. So the homeless people are gonna get beat and they're gonna be mistreated. I myself feel that this mayor is a liar. And you haven't heard me say, actually call someone out by the liar, but we have quite a few that's on this board. And the reason why I call you a liar because you say one thing and do another. I tried to explain to Mr. Mosley. He seemed like he didn't understand. When I said, Mr. Mosley, Wednesday, when we step in here, you take it, take the role, and then we, the citizens, speak first. When you talk and you had somebody, Wednesday, he said, thank you, counselor. I said, you should have been thanking us. We sit here all day while you sit and talk amongst each other on the phone, on the computer, on the tablet, or get up from the table and go over against the wall and be on the phone. Those, you have people that's up, people that's on the television, they don't see it. If they came down, then they would feel the same way I do because it's total disrespect. Now, I go to a program, my grandchildren go to upstep program, and these children, whenever any adult comes in the room to speak to them, they stand up and they look directly at these people. When these, they don't talk amongst each other like yous do. Yous are very disrespectful. You show no respect, none. I've been coming here over 20 something years. I come and they say I just come for, for myself. I can't, well, I mean, what did I come for? My son is dead. I can't bring him back. And I cannot change anything, but I can stop maybe another mother that wouldn't have to go through this. Do you understand? We come, I come down here because you need to know what you don't know. You don't know everything. If you don't come to my community, you won't know what's happening in the community. I come down because the people tell me. I'm not just coming by myself. Sometime I do because I'm determined to come. But you've had people that will call me and people will stop me. Go down and tell them, Ms. Brown, and I have, and I will continue.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we move on to our standing committee agenda. First committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. Our first bill is Bill 1331.
Bill 1331, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Frost, Brown, Todd LLC for legal services in connection with a sports facility usage fee tax dispute for an amount not to exceed $49,597.29 over one year.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1332.
Bill 1332, resolution amending resolution 1016 of 1991, which authorized the creation of the Emergency Medical Services Reimbursed Events Trust Fund to rename the fund and update its allowable uses for consistency with other such funds within the Department of Public Safety at no cost to the city.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1333.
Bill 1333, resolution amending resolution 259 of 2013, which authorized the creation of Police Secondary Employment Trust Fund to update its allowable uses for consistency with other such funds within the Department of Public Safety at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve. Need a second?
Second with discussion.
Thank you. Discussion, Councilwoman?
Can we just have what the other acceptable uses might be for both of these bills before final vote next week for the prior bill and this bill?
Yes, we'll get, we'll get a list to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1335. Did I skip something? I've been doing that all day today.
1334.
Oh, sorry.
Resolution authorizing and directing the city controller to create a special trust fund to be designated as the Fire Secondary Employment Trust Fund for the deposit of monies from fire details, secondary employment, and special events cost recovery, and authorizing the use of monies deposited therein by the Department of Public Safety to cover premium pay reimbursement for fire personnel and administrative costs related to the aforementioned activities at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is, is there any discussion about can we have some, somebody give us some explanation? Who, who introduced the bill?
These are in the Finance and Law Department. They came from the administration. Hold on one second. If you come to the table, Director?
I don't want to delay for the meeting, just, or delay the meeting. If I could just get some explanation before final vote, abstain on the bill. Thank you.
We have our director about to sit down and provide explanation.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer, secondary employment bill, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
For fire.
So, the Bureau of Fire does not actually have a special revenue account set up for it to take funds that come in from secondary employment work. What we do with our other public safety bureaus is we separate that out so it doesn't move in and out of the general fund. So this creation of the Bureau of, of a fund for the Bureau of Fire moves that in line with what we do for our other bureaus. And, and the creation of the fire one is really why OMB and Public Safety work together to look at the language in all of the bills and really modernize them.
So, I would be honest, you know, I look at all these different trust funds and I always try to reduce them, and you know this. And so now here we are, right before an election, creating another trust fund, and it just, it raises a flag to me. So, I'll abstain today till I get a little bit more, have a little bit more conversation with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1335.
Bill 1335, resolution amending resolution 106 of 2020, which authorized the creation of the Crossing Guards Special Events Trust Fund to rename the fund and update its allowable uses for consistency with other such funds within the Department of Public Safety at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, it's just, I just have questions about the, and concerns about trust funds. I think what I'll do is wait till the end of the meeting, call for a post agenda, a public hearing on the trust funds. Thank you. Abstain today.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? I believe we have one abstention, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 1336. That's all I had you here for.
Last one, I think.
Okay.
Bill 1336, resolution providing for the conveyance by the city of Pittsburgh of certain property having been placed for sale to adjoining property owners in conjunction with the city of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, items A through X. 306 North Millville Avenue, District 9, 5204 Kincaid Street, District 9, 5414 Broad Street, District 9, 216 North Aiken Street, or North Aiken Avenue, District 9, 5436 Rosetta Street, District 9, 5465 Kincaid Street, District 9, 1217 Montezuma Street, District 9, 303 Renfrew Street, District 9, 305 Renfrew Street, District 9, 1440 Oberlin Street, District 9, 295 West Elizabeth Street, District 5, 2410 Cary Way, District 3, 34 Millbridge Street, District 3, 943 Manton Way, District 3, 939 Manton Way, District 3, 0 Michigan Street, District 3, 0 Wilhelm Street, District 2, 933 Eitan Street, District 1, 0 Norwood Avenue, District 6, 906 Luella Street, District 1, 1420 Guyer Avenue, District 1, 3206 Rothpleth Street, District 1, 4520 Armor Hills Avenue, District 5, and 4520 Armor Hill Avenue, District 5.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Wilson.
Oh, yes. I'd like to make a voice memo to strike 933 Eitan Street. This is second time that I've done this for this street because I looked at the parcel and there needs to be a more comprehensive plan than for people to use these sidewalks for parking here, off-street parking. We have people that are parking on the, we have people that are parking on the sidewalk. So, it's a real issue. So walkers and biker, it's really dangerous. I mean, it's not, it's not a, I don't know, it's not typical to see someone with a stroller in the middle of the street because they have to go around cars. So I, this means, it means to be a more comprehensive solution. So, I understand it falls within side yard program, but I'd like to have a greater discussion about what we can do for this section of Eitan Street. And I'm just worried that providing off-street parking would be more, you know, would, would increase the, the danger there.
Second.
So motion is to delete item R, which is 933 Eitan Street.
Correct.
And it's been seconded. Discussion, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I just have, I, not looking to amend anything, but just for item W, just for before it comes to final vote. It says the address is 4518, but the address of the purchaser is 4518 Armor Hill, just in case those numbers are wrong. Just to give it a second look, that's all, before the final vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So let's move.
Mr. President, or, I just wanted to act just in general. I just want to say that I think we have to do something more about the parking on sidewalks, period across the city. This has been going on since I've been in office across the city of Pittsburgh. But we have a lot of these issues and not just related to these vacant properties, but all across Pittsburgh. If we could just come up with some kind of policy that works best for all of Pittsburgh. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make a comment there, but first I wanted, all those in favor of deleting item R.
Aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion on the bill as amended? I need to say to Councilwoman Smith, and me and Bobby have had this conversation before, the problem is, yes, I have lots of concerns about people parking on sidewalks. There will never be one policy that fits this entire city because of how unique some of our, our streets are, right?
Right.
Like, on the street that I live in, there are some areas at the bend where it's justifiable that you're on the sidewalk. Otherwise, it'd be almost impossible to get a medical, to get like a fire truck or anything passed. There are other parts of our city where there's absolutely no reason for you to park on the sidewalk, and yet people do it anyway. And it ultimately becomes an enforcement question, and we don't really enforce it, right? And it's also very subjective on whether or not it's needed to, for you to move on to a sidewalk to allow for traffic. So, long story short, it's an issue I actually care about. I've never been able to think through on my own what a sort of better policy would look like, but I'd be more than willing to work with you, Councilwoman Smith, in the new year, and any other members who have shared this sort of general concern.
I would love that. Can I just say real quickly that, Meander McNeely, when she was the commander in Zone 3, she had a general policy, two wheels on the curb, she didn't ticket. Four wheels on the curb, she ticketed. But I guess Parking Authority tickets too, and they'd involve the same guidelines. So I don't know how we can maybe work with, maybe Councilman Wilson as well, on just how we work together with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments on this because, I mean, this is, this is conversation way before I even came on council, but you know, there are opportunities to work with the police that would, you know, give warnings, and then that has worked. I mean, the one, like no one has even ticketed, but it has worked with the warnings to get people off the sidewalk. But then, you know, people start parking back on the sidewalk in two or three weeks after that warning. So the long-term solution could be, you know, more comprehensive, you know, ways that we would ticket for it. And Parking Authority could be involved. The issue right now is that we're below half staff at Parking Authority enforcement officers. And recently, I called for a post agenda earlier this morning, which I believe relates to it because I do believe we do need to, you know, figure out a good path in terms of increasing the amount of staff that's at the Parking Authority to do enforcement like this. And I think it'd be great for, you know, we provide, you know, good family sustaining jobs there so that we can, you know, get people, not only get at full staff, but also really make sure that we're being more comprehensive about what we can and for the capacity of what we can take for at the Parking Authority.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
Also too, just I see we have our Public Safety Director. I think that parking on the sidewalk together with running red lights and all, you know, these sort of move, you know, car-related violations. I think that if we had, again, our, our police officers out and about as much as possible out in the community, these are all things that they can be doing sort of as a matter of course, day to day, not 24/7 and, you know, not when they're on a call. But I think that, you know, citing or whether it's a warning, I mean, I'm all for warning tickets the first time, you know. Anyway, those are my thoughts there. Thanks.
We could add, we could add to Councilman Sharland's quality of life bill. But anyway, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation on Bill 1336. Bill 1344.
Bill 1344, resolution authorizing the city's acceptance of deeds conveying all right, title, and interest in parcels 232A, 266, which is a vacant land parcel on a wooded hillside with no address, located along Warsaw Street and Nimmick Place, Council District 9, and in the 13th Ward abutted by city-owned parcels, and 46J315, which is a vacant land parcel with no address on Cutler Street in Council District 6, and in the 26th Ward abutted by a city-owned parcel to the city of Pittsburgh, and authorizing the payment of $1 in exchange for the parcel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1345.
Bill 1345, resolution amending and supplementing resolution number 598 of 2004, effective December 10th, 2004, entitled, "Resolution Amending Resolution Number 145 of 2001, Effective March 28th, 2001," which amended resolution number 69 of 2001, effective February 28th, 2001, which amended resolution number 844 of 1989, effective October 27th, 1989, which amended resolution number 564 of 1989, effective July 17th, 1989, authorizing implementation of an employee tuition reimbursement program to reduce such reimbursement to 50% of tuition costs pursuant to Act 47 Plan Initiative WF15 by extending the prior approval requirement for eligible employees and providing for a retroactive effective date.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman?
Yeah, there are some changes to the, to the current program that wish to make, which would affect the council offices and the mayor's office, to give them the ability to approve classes that employees would, would take and qualify, and to be able to get reimbursement for the classes that would fall under the criteria for reimbursement.
Okay, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, if you don't mind. I don't know who's here to speak to the bill. I think I've got to just ask some questions. Do we, who do we have in chambers who can speak to this bill?
Sponsored by Councilman Wilson, so.
Does we have the HR department maybe, or maybe, I'll start with just the financial parts, maybe Pete can answer them?
Sure, the financial.
Director?
I mean.
Would you mind coming to the table? We'll bring our budget director up because here's what I understand, but I don't know that I'm correct. And even though we just voted on the budget, I don't have it memorized line by line. It's my impression that there's one pot of funds kind of assigned to each department. I don't know if I'm summarizing that correctly, so that the departments affected by this change with the retroactive date that isn't this budget year, then we'd be trying to pay previous enrollments for previous employees from previous budget years and current employees, current enrollments and current tuition reimbursements all out of the same pot. Can you help me understand a little better how this works?
Hi, Pete McDevitt, City Council Budget Director. So, we, there is a tuition reimbursement line in the operating budget that is funded in certain departments, if that's something that they've planned for in the budget. So, yeah, I think how you're describing it is correct, that each department, if they worked with OMB to include it in the budget, then they would have funds available for tuition reimbursement for employees that they expect to be going to, to school to get it.
Okay, so this amendment does not amend the process or the effective dates for every city department. Have you read it?
I'm not super familiar with it, but from what I understand, it's just for city council and the mayor's office.
That's what the sponsor just said, and I'm kind of trying to also read it. I've got it, and I kind of type the text file up on a tiny screen in my hand here. So, for the office of the mayor, city council, or the office of the city clerk, do you know what the dollar amount is for 2025?
Yeah, hang on.
I don't know if that's one dollar amount or it's three different dollar amounts.
So, for the city clerk's office, there's $22,500 that we set aside for an employee that we know is going to school right now. And the mayor's office, it looks like they don't have anything in 2025. And city council does not have anything for 2025.
Well, that's a shame because I think I know some staff members on the hall who plan on taking classes, who will be filing for tuition reimbursements. So actually, I'm glad I asked. So that's not good. So, if we voted yes today on this, then, so not like current staff members for city council, but previous staff members going back to 2019, I think, could say, hey, I want a tuition reimbursement, but we've allocated no funds for it. So the answer would be no. What I had assumed was that like maybe there was a $20,000 pot, but like, I don't know if there's like, maybe I need to talk to HR. I don't think HR is in the room. To be like, okay, so like how many staffers don't work at city council right now, or do work at city council right now? And then how many, like people have applied for tuition reimbursement and gotten it or been turned down by it? And so like, how much money might this be, you know, as a, if we, if we change the policy from what it is right now? So right now, if we don't vote this amendment, like current staff or current employees, including, you know, elected officials, I guess, or actually, we're not technically employees, but people who work in the mayor's office, city clerk or city council can take college, enroll in university classes, and then apply for, I think it's a 25% reimbursement, do you know that?
50%.
That's amazing. I actually think it's one of the greatest things we do. And this is, this is true across every city department.
I took advantage of it in OMB.
Well done. I'm really, and look at you now, you're still here, right? So I think this is actually one of the best things. So I'm just gonna kind of repeat it again. If you work, if you take a job with city and work full-time, and I think spend 12 months with us?
I believe, yeah, you have to be here for a certain.
You don't get the benefit day one, but after 12 months, you can enroll, and if approved, get a 50% tuition discount, which is amazing. get a 50% tuition discount, which is amazing. Basically, it's, so it's, it's, you know, money that is paying half your tuition. And I like to talk about that because, you know, our payroll is not always the most competitive for people in the private sector, and, you know, people say you can't afford to work for the city, but there are also lots of people out there who can't afford higher education. And I think it's, working for the city is a really quite, great way to affordability. And certainly, I think we've had, you know, we could go through stories of people who have worked for the city and would not have been able to afford their education, their higher education, if not for the tuition benefit. So I'm super in favor of it, and I'm like enthusiastic about it. I just don't understand today what the, you know, what the impact is of, again, I don't, you know, are there 100 people who will suddenly be like, hey, here's my tuition bill from five years ago or something like that? Like, I don't think we can afford that. And I'm not even sure if they were, for example, turned down because of the structure of the policy, you know, maybe I need to understand the policy. I don't know that we're gonna get into it today, but I think I need to understand the policy a little better and why it's structured that way. Why are there checks and balances on the tuition approvals? Usually, in good government, it's good to have checks and balances on things like, you know, a benefit. So I'm not sure that removing those checks and balances is prudent at a high level, and it certainly might not be prudent on the direct budgetary impact now. And then I'm not sure how the tracking accountability goes. So those are my top thoughts. I don't know, you know, I guess I'll just kind of leave it up to the body here. Do we want to have this conversation? Do we want to talk to HR now? Do we want to? I'll let other, other members maybe ask their questions and, and think about that myself. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other members, first round? If not, second round, Council?
Yes, Council President.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, sorry, go ahead.
It's okay, I didn't raise my hand, so it's okay, I just jumped in. I, you know, brief discussion with the bill sponsors, my understanding that this helps to clo, helps to open up the window of time, by which a, an applicant can apply for reimbursement. Right now, it seems like it's a pretty small window, and if you miss it, you're out of luck. That said, I, I too am interested in learning a little bit more about some of the unintended consequences or ramifications, so, you know, I'm supportive of the general idea. I certainly don't want any unintended consequences that would negatively impact the budget. And, you know, I, I'm supportive, but I would love a little bit more time to discuss and hear directly from Human Resources as well.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the person in HR who handles tuition reimbursement is currently at lunch, so who knows? What that, before going to second round, my understanding of the bill, and again, I'm generally supportive of the idea, is not to necessarily remove checks and balances, but rather allow us more directly to be able to interact with sort of the reimbursement process, so they're not getting us stuck in sort of the various HR things, but rather we, I know in the past, and I was asking Pete about this earlier, because I don't remember ever, at least myself, proactively saying, put X amount in the budget, but I do know one of my staffers, I signed off on them to go back to school, they went back to school, they got reimbursed, it's a great feature, to your point, but I was never proactive in putting money in the budget, because I thought there was a general line item back then that we had in our budget, and that we just drew down from that. But things may have changed, policy may have changed since then, because that was probably eight years ago now. I know currently, there's, we, there's a staffer on the floor that I've signed off to go to school for. So if we have not appropriately allocated the money, and we have staffers that are expecting this, then that's an issue we need to try to figure out quickly. Second round, Councilman Wilson, I believe, I saw Councilwoman Gross's hand go back up.
Wait, second round?
Second round.
Yeah, but I, did you? I thought it was like. Okay, um, so second round, I was gonna.
I didn't know this was in your wheelhouse.
You could be still in the first round. You have questions? Okay, I was, I'm sorry, second round, come to me.
Second round, Director Cornell raises his hand, and he may be able to speak to some of this, but.
Well, I'm not calling him to the table.
Okay, don't worry.
Unless he really. Sorry, what? I just wanted to mention, I don't have a budgetary question for you, maybe another member wants to call you to the table, but I just wanted to make sure that I just stayed like, you know, I often hear that DOMI doesn't pay enough because they, you know, they're not competitive, and this whole idea of, you know, time and time again, I hear that we don't pay enough for different salaries, and we're not competitive with the private market. Is there a strategy to contract out and get someone who doesn't live in the city? All these conversations happen, and I think that these are, just like our whole benefit package, like, this is part of the, the benefits of trying to work for, you know, the public is that there is opportunities like this, and I think if you did the work, did the class when you're here, you qualified, then you should be reimbursed. That is part of the, that is part of what attracts, you know, employees, and, you know, I think that what I've learned here is that it's, it's not as, I think there's, the way it was handled in the past was different, maybe there was a pot of money. Currently, there isn't. There's, you know, people could apply to HR, and then just even to try and like, figure out, well, how much is that gonna cost us all year? That, it seems like departments are handling it differently, to figure out how much we would spend on this current employee if they were to continue to apply. So, you know, maybe there is a larger discussion we had, but historically, in terms of the funds, they don't look to be an exuberant amount of money that's being allocated even now between the departments for this. So it doesn't look like a cost that's gonna, you know, totally disrupt the budget. And I realize that we don't fully understand who could apply for these funds going back to 2019, but that's just something that we would have to figure out, maybe it's mid-year, to figure out where the funds will come from, to make sure that people are reimbursed appropriately. That's it, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gross.
Thank you. I'll bring Director Cornell up to ask a few questions then. So just following up on last discussion, if the assumption is that this bill allows kind of people who don't work for the city anymore to say, like, I used to work for the city, and I used to be a student, here's my tuition, you know, check that I paid, you know, now give me a 50% reimbursement on that, then that if it were, if it were mayor's office and there's zero allocated from 2025, what would happen?
So that's a good question. Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer. The way that the administration in our departments, you know, on the administrative side of things work through it, we advise department directors during the budget process to, to make sure they know who was enrolled in a program, who wants to be enrolled in a program.
We don't want to budget tons and tons of money that just sits there, and we don't anticipate, but on the other hand, you don't want to budget nothing.
Correct. For example, in OMB, I know of the two employees who have been approved and will have their, you know, 25 reimbursement, part of 26 reimbursement, and then their programs finish. So through the, the current HR policy now, it's an internal department approval with the director, and that's, is the program related to your job and do we have budget for it? And then from there, there are preapproval forms each semester that kind of go course by course. This is what, I'm taking this term, and then you have to kind of work through the preapproval, so it routes through the approval process, and then a reimbursement at the end of the term when you show your grades and you show what you've, you've actually accomplished.
If you get, if you fail, you don't get the reimbursement?
There are grade level requirements in the.
If you get a B, do you get a reimbursement?
Yeah, B is the minimum from graduate. B minus is not, that's why I did not get reimbursed for macroeconomics.
Amazing.
Missed it by four points.
He just publicly disclosed that.
That was him.
Amazing. Okay, well, I interrupted you because I, this is new to me, I did not know this, sorry.
So, you know, like, I, again, I took advantage of this benefit as well when I took accounting courses at CCAC, and I had my plan kind of worked out and approved by, by OMB leadership, you know, a few years back when I was working through it. But every semester, I submitted my preapproval forms, worked through school, got my reimbursement, and the way that I worked through it on the budget side is, is we made sure that we knew actually what would be paid out after the fall semester in the spring. What would we, what would be paid out in the spring semester, usually in the summer? What would be paid out in the summer semester, usually in the fall? So we did that so that we could try to budget it, and that certainly is something that has helped at least OMB kind of get a better grasp on the tuition dollars that we need and should have budgeted.
Okay, so here's the way I've summarized it for myself. So the preapproval is, there's like basically two general questions. Is it related to your, you know, city employment, to your job? And is there budget for it? So that concerns me, because right now, I've been told there's no budget for, for some departments. And then secondly, that was preapproval, and then, so like you, if you're the employee, then you go and you sign up for a class, and then there's a question that says, is this class basically like germane, right? So maybe I've gotten preapproved to do a bachelor's in business administration, but I'm trying to, you know, I signed up for a dance or pottery class or something, right?
Right.
And then the HR would be like, eh, you know, that's not actually germane to your job or to your degree. And then the second level is, well, okay, it was accounting 101, and then the second level for approval is like, did you get a B or above? I'm sorry, I don't know why, I'm a little surprised by that, but I guess that's motivation for, for good grades. Okay, so that's how it works. So back to the first part, so, you know, a staffer on the City Council Hall in January is gonna be like, hey, I'm taking my business administration class that I got preapproved for, you know, I'm taking accounting 101, and it's gonna be like, oh, there's no budget for it. No benefit for you.
I would defer that one to Council Budget Director McDevitt.
I mean, I think it's important to remember that City Council has the final say on the budget, and should you want to.
But we can't amend the operating budget all year, so if this is a summer semester class, we're gonna be, ooh, well, you're out of luck with your city benefit that we've been touting, and all the council members, like, this is so great that we do this, but also, oops, there's no money in the pot?
It would require a full resolution if we wanted to shift funds from a different department to, to put it in the City Council District coffers.
So maybe that's something we need to fix in January. Because when I was starting this question, I assumed there was a pot, and I was like, well, it's not fair if, you know, we allocated these funds for kind of like staff who are taking classes in 2025, but then someone's like, hey, I'm over here from 2020, and it depletes the pot, right? We don't want that to happen either. So I, I mean, before I vote on this, I would like to understand, what are the, just a hypothetical, maybe there's no one that actually this would apply to retrospectively or retroactively, or maybe there's a gazillion people it would apply to retroactively. And so I think we should figure out what that is, and then we can allocate funds in the budget if we all agree that this is, we should change these policies. So that's my two cents.
May I add one thing as well?
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Okay, so we have a motion to approve on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, I'm not voting on this. Are you trying to pass it today?
There's a motion to approve on the table.
No.
I was gonna ask for a hold. I didn't realize you were.
I'll stay tuned.
I, I need a little time.
Then it believes, I believe it received an affirmative recommendation. That takes us to the Interdepartmental Transfers. We need a motion to approve the transfers.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers have been approved. We do have P cards and a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards have been approved. That takes us to Public Safety and Wellness Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Coghill. Our first new paper is Bill 1324.
Bill 1324, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's local share account statewide to provide funding to purchase two ambulances. The grant proposal includes an ask of $1 million for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Clear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1325.
Bill 1325, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an agreement or agreements with Humane Animal Rescue of Pittsburgh for detention, care, and/or euthanasia of domesticated animals at an overall cost to the city not to exceed $2,280,273 over three years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just, just a brief question. Councilwoman Harris actually called me and asked me why we're charging different prices for the animals, and I didn't know if we were or not. Does anybody know the answer to that? She said, used to be, we could charge the same for cats and dogs. I don't know what else we do. I think this is appropriate, maybe it's a different one.
We have atom control here.
We've talked about this previously, I just don't recall off the top of my head, but we have had this conversation, but, yeah, sure.
I'd like.
If you would identify yourself for the public record and then explain why we're charging different amounts for different animals.
Lee Schmidt, Public Safety Director for the city.
David Madden, Supervisor of Pittsburgh Animal Care and Control.
So this, the legislation in front of you is not for what Councilperson Kail Smith is asking, but that's what she's asking, I believe, is around the spay and neuter, correct? Councilperson?
I don't, I have to be honest, I really don't know. I just know she mentioned, called me this weekend and mentioned it.
Yeah, so we.
I just said, no, if there was one or one program, and if we were charging differently for something, that's all.
Yeah, the only program we charge for is the spay and neuter, so that's the only one I can think of. And.
Okay.
Yeah, we are charging for dogs only in that program, and most of that is just budgetary decisions as well as impact of dogs. Dogs are typically kept in houses and aren't stray, or outside animals on a regular basis in most, and again, that was a decision made just to maintain that budget, so we didn't have to increase the budget in order to do the dogs. But cats, in their nature, and many cats are inside, outside, or just outside, whether they're owned or not, they have different breeding habits and breed more frequently than dogs will.
Okay, I, I don't want to pretend that I'm not expert on this, I just wanted to make sure I raised the concern that was brought to me over the weekend, if this was related to that. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for your work.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you for being here. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Warwick. Our first new paper is Bill 1337.
Bill 1337, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's local share account statewide to provide funding for the planning around the Bluff Street steps. The grant proposal includes an ask of $176,400 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1338.
Bill 1338, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's local share account statewide to provide funding for the Shenley Heights Pavilion Construction Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $1 million for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1339.
Bill 1339, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director. Bill 1339, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds from the 902 Municipal Recycling Grant in the Amount Not to Exceed $200,000 for Equipment and Outreach Around the City's Recycling Program. The grant requires a match from the City of Pittsburgh in the Amount Not to Exceed $22,223 for this stated purpose, for a total project cost not to exceed $222,223.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1340.
Bill 1340, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with H.W. Lochner, Inc. for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase for the Pittsburgh City Steps Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $669,850.78 reimbursable at 80%.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1341.
Bill 1341, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with CSXT for Preliminary Engineering Work on the Rehabilitation of the West Carson Street Bridge, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $16,280 reimbursable at 95%.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1342.
Bill 1342, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Biano Construction, Inc. in the Amount of $31,350 for the Purpose of Off-Contract Sidewalk Repairs, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to the Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. First new paper, only new paper, Bill 1343.
Bill 1343, Resolution Approving an Institutional Master Plan Application under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article II, Chapter 905, Section 905, oh, 3D to Central Catholic High School. Property owner for the Central Catholic High School campus located along Fifth Avenue and South Neville Street. Parcels 52J 264 and 52J 118, Zoned Educational Medical Institution, 14th Ward, Council District Number 8.
Motion to hold cable cast public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill beha, held for a cable cast public hearing. That takes us to Recreation Youth Senior Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith. Our first new paper is Bill 1327.
Bill 1327, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Broad, Broadband Development Authority for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds from the ARPA Capital Projects Fund Digital Connectivity Technology Program in the Form of Laptops Valued at an Amount Not to Exceed $295,000 for Rec to Tech Program.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1328.
Bill 1328, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into Financial and In-Kind Sponsorship Agreements valued at $10,000 or less for the City Parks Office of Special Events 2025 season.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1329.
Bill 1329, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Pittsburgh Regional Transit in an Amount Not to Exceed $13,411.75 for Transportation Services for the 2024 Richard S. Caligari Great Race on September 29, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1330.
Bill 1330, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to Enter into an Agreement with Swank Motion Pictures, Inc. as a sole source for 2025, 2026, and 2027 for rental and display rights of certain movie entertainment for events to be held by the Office of Special Events for a yearly cost of $32,000, and a total cost not to exceed $96,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Just briefly, if anybody has any questions about any of the Parks and Rec bills, Director Vargas sent me an explanation. I'm happy to share with members if you want to see any, for any of the bills.
Thank you very much. So, we did vote, didn't we? Okay, so, we received an affirmative recommendation. So, that takes us to Intergovernmental Educational Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Mosley. We have two papers, the first being Bill 1326.
Bill 1326, Resolution Authorizing a Sub-Award Agreement or Agreements Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed $750,000 to the Urban Redevelopment Authority to Support the Development of Affordable Housing on Homewood Avenue as Part of a Federal Appropriation Managed by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing, Councilman?
Just extremely briefly, this is a part of a federal earmark that actually started during when a former congressman, Mike Doyle, was still in office, that moved through the system. So, just to give a brief context of what this is.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, congratulations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. And lastly, Bill 1350.
Bill 1350, Resolution Further Admending Resolution 413 of 2020, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements relating to the Shared Operation and Administration of the City of Pittsburgh Child Care Quality Fund by Extending the Term Through 2025 at No Further Cost to the City.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to motion resolutions. Anything from members? If not, we do have a meeting announcement. Next week, council will hold our regular meeting on Monday, December 30 at 10:00 a.m. There will be no standing committee meeting next week. Then on Wednesday, December 25, city council and the clerk's office will be closed in observance of the Christmas holiday. If you want to speak at next week's meeting, please, please fill up the sign-up form or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Motion to excuse the absent members. Motion to approve the minutes. Motion to adjourn the meeting and wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Happy Festivus as well.
Happy Festivus.
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, everything.
So approved, or so moved, right?
Second. I can't second it.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.